I'd like to call the Westmont Village Board meeting of June 8, 2017 to order at 6:05 PM. And ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor.
Here.
Clerk's here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Berry.
Here.
Trustee Guzal.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Manette Terme.
Here.
Attorney Demannak.
Can I ask everybody, please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on your side indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. The first item on the agenda, of course, is open forum. If anybody's here to talk about any item that's not on the agenda, now's the time to raise your hand and do it. If not, I will close open forum and then move on to reports. And I'd like to call Mike Ramsey up to the podium. We're going to be starting our alley reconstruction project for this year, and he's got some important information.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I can get this to work or not. We'll see. I don't know if I can get it on the screen or not. We'll see. But yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. What's going to be happening on, obviously you guys are all aware, we're going to be starting our CBD alley construction project. Section F, which is between basically Chicago Avenue and Norfolk Avenue behind Manning School. And one of the problems that we've, we had an open meeting for some of the residents to come out and talk to us. And one of the things that came up in that meeting was a parking issue for 227 North Cass. It's apartment complex just north of Dilworth Window and Glass Company. The problem they're having is they have, the only access they have is to the alley. They have no access to Cass Avenue. So once we start the construction of tearing up the alley, they have no way to get in and out with a vehicle. Because there's going to be no traffic going through the alley at all. So we had to come up with an idea. So I came up with an idea to talk to the business owner across the street from him at 218-222 North Cass. It's a vacant, currently vacant little strip mall, three units. And asked him if he'd be open to the idea of us renting six parking stalls for these residents. So they have somewhere to park their vehicle and they can still get out. I mean, it's almost directly across from where their current apartment complex is. I talked to the owner. He's open to the idea. Worked out, negotiated a price pretty closely to what we charge what our commuters pay currently. We'd like to have it rent for three months, six stalls for the next three months, basically from June 15 to September 15. Because by September 15, if weather permitting, we should be done with the project. Also, school will be back in session, and so we kind of need to be done by then anyway, at least substantially completed by then. So I'm here asking you tonight if it's okay to have a leasing agreement with this gentleman that owns the property at 218-222 for these residents of this apartment too, so we don't inundate them with any kind of inconvenience during this whole project. Also during Taste of Westmont, you know, Cass Avenue is also shut down. So this will still give them an opportunity to have access to their vehicle and still be able to get in and out from this location at 218.
Residential type areas, we would make some, we just let people park on the street overnight. And one, I don't know that we'd want to do this on Cass Avenue in the businesses district anyway. But then throw in Taste of Westmont, and they physically have no option. So the thought is making it just part of the cost of the construction project.
Steve, with the exception of Taste of Westmont, why wouldn't we just use our public parking that's a door away for free? I mean, we have a whole open parking lot that is not used during the summer for Manning. That's actually on the same side of the street. Why would we rent when we already own that?
Well, that parking lot too is kind of on the same alley that's, you know.
I understand, but it has an entrance off of Cass.
There's an entrance off Cass and the exits, you know, in the alley. I mean, I was, part of the thinking was just to separate them as far as possible from the construction that's displacing them already. I mean, it's a good point, but.
I mean, they got to go to their door, which is going to be, you know, if you know that building, the door is on the side. It's not on the front. So I mean, they're going to be, in theory, closer when they go to their residency, the construction than they are parking at the public parking garage.
Right.
I mean, again, I'm just trying to say my, I mean, it's whatever. It could be potentially more surety.
Were you going to close that lot?
It would be about the same distance. I mean, would Trustee Barker saying it's about the same distance.
Block crossing.
Because that's on the same side of the street. Yeah, it's on the same side of the street. But the problem is with the construction there, a lot of the construction is probably going to stage some stuff in that parking lot while they're doing the work. So I want to make sure that they have access away from the construction site completely, just in case something like that comes up. You know, and then, you know, with Taste of Westmont, they're going to start staging earlier that week. So that whole week, sorry, the whole week before Taste of Westmont, the vendors come in and take over that parking lot. So there's a lot of reasons why we thought, try to get them as close to their apartment complex, but away from where the construction is. So that's, that was our thinking. But I mean, it's a very good point. I mean, it's a valid point.
And that lot's no good for Taste of Westmont either, because that's Beer Garden.
Right, but we worked out in the behind there, if you see in this picture here, there's a gravel area. That's where they'll park, which, not actually in a parking stalls, but just for those four days, they'll park in that gravel area. That was also brought up. That's a very good point, too, that they can't park in those stalls because the beer tent will be there.
So what was the cost on the rental for that?
It's $50 per month per stall. So it's $900 total for the three months. So $300 a month for the six spots. There's, currently right now, they have six vehicles in, so all six spots would take care of those six vehicles. It's a four-unit apartment, but a couple of them have more than one vehicle, so.
If you're in favor of this, this would be on the next agenda for approval of the lease agreement. And I think what staff is looking at, because the project may actually start and the potential displacement before the next meeting, June 22, approval to sign off on the lease agreement and present it to you retroactively a little.
It appears to me that project has started, right?
Nycor has been doing, working, doing work in there. The actual stormwater project has not started, but Nycor has already been in there. We notified them back in January that we were doing this project, and they dragged their feet until now to start the project. Nycor said they should be done, weather permitted, they should be done on Friday, June 16. So the stormwater project should start on Monday, June 19, if everything goes.
Because there's been heavy-duty tractor, as you probably well.
Right, right. Yeah, that's all Nycor. That's not us. Yeah, Nycor's doing their work, which is good. I'm glad they're getting in there before we start, because we don't want them coming in after the fact.
And it appeared to me that they were using that vacant lot there in between Oakwood Electric and that guy with all the fancy cars inside home, you know. It seemed like that that area was being used as a staging equipment area. I don't know if that was part of our plan or not. I understand that's private property there.
That's private property. That was something that, and Nycor got a little bit in trouble for that too. Because they weren't supposed to be staging stuff there. They had nothing worked out with this. We had to go tell them to move their stuff. They actually had a porta potty there, and they had something else there, and they weren't supposed to have either one of those things in that lot. They just assumed it was the village's property, and it wasn't. We had to explain to them it was not a village property.
What are you, with this alley, is the alley going to be turned up completely all the way up and down?
All the way.
What's happening to Nature's Best?
They still have access off of Naperville Road.
Will they be able to get their trucks in for, because I know.
The delivery is going to be, the delivery is going to be difficult, and they're aware of it. So they're going to have to back in, and they're going to have to do some maneuvering. There's, if you look at Nature's Best, they have a little bit of a space between the alley and their building. So they're going to have to bring stuff in that way, but they will not be able to park in the alley at all, unfortunately, so. But again, you know, as you've seen with the section A and section B, once the project is done, everybody's pretty happy with the final product. So we, you know, they understand that they're going to be inconvenienced for two months. But, you know, if they can, hopefully if, you know, everything goes really well, we'll get done with it soon and get back to normal business as usual.
I think as we experienced with here, our renters are the highest maintenance to satisfy, it seems like. Because they don't get communication from the landlord that we communicate and so forth. So sometimes they're the last ones.
Well, that tells us we're a good bargain at $35 a month for our commuter spot, right?
Yeah. That is correct. That is correct.
I think you made a better decision. I understand what Harold is saying about that lot, but that's, if there are a lot of cars because of the angle, I think using in and out of the same driveway, it would be difficult.
Yeah.
So, and I appreciate the fact that it's ours and they could do it for free, except for the, the week of the taste. It's still, I think it's still a problem getting in and out of there easily, so.
I'm going to go check it out tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to see how hard it is to get in and out of that parking lot. I don't know. I never had a problem getting in and out of that parking lot.
But do it, do it when cars are parked at an angle and then back out the wrong way. And then figure out how you're going to turn your car around to pull out a gas.
Most of the time I'm there is when Manning's involved or it's a function where it's really full, okay? So I mean, I don't think I've ever used the alley exit. I didn't even realize it was an exit and entrance.
There is, there is one way in and one way out.
Sorry, Chief. I did that wrong.
Well, any more questions? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to call Larry McIntyre. Is he here? Here he comes.
Here he comes.
To give us an update on our Sister City program and the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting that we held.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Village Board. First, I'll talk about 100th Anniversary Committee. We met a couple of weeks ago and talked about what we have coming up for this year, which is our 96th anniversary. And we have lots of plans. Real soon, we hope to have an update on our historical mural, which this year we'll be doing Phase Two of a five-part project. In addition, we're continuing our historical videos and historical essay contest. And all of that will culminate for later this year for our 96th anniversary, November 10. And then the next item.
Any artists indicate their interest in doing Phase Two?
We did have several people submit, you know, their interest. And then we're talking with them, and we'll be announcing that direction real soon.
You've got, you've got some options.
We do.
Good.
Thank you. And then the next item is regarding our Sister City program. We're in close communication with Shinhu County. That's our sister city partner in Taiwan. And we just found out earlier this week that unfortunately, the governor of Shinhu County had to go have a surgical procedure. And so they've had to cancel their current trip to the United States and to Westmont. And so it's postponed, and we're in the process of talking with them to reschedule. But all of the ceremonies that we had been planning for July 4 are canceled. But we'll keep people abreast of updates as they come forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point, I've got some service awards I'd like to present. For service, length of service to the village. All right, I'd like to, one of them is our own clerk, Benissimski.
Yeah, Benny.
Do you want to come up here? I could present you. The Village of Westmont honors Virginia Simmski, village clerk, member of the village's administration department from 1997-2017 in its recognition of your 20 years of dedicated service to the community. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We get a picture. Just if I take it out of the box, right? Another 20-year service award, Deputy Chief Stephen Riley. Again, 1997-2017, and again, it's the recognition of his 20 years of dedicated service to this community. And here you go. I'll take the sticky off of there. All right, thank you. Congratulations. Now we've got a 25-year recognition to Kathy Crane. And Kathy is our human resource director, and she's been a member of the administration department for those 25 years. And this is in recognition of all those years of service. So congratulations. I'm not bending my knee. Congratulations. And at this point, I'll move on to Clerk Simmski.
I have a couple of items. First of all, yesterday we had a team, no, Tuesday afternoon, we had a team from the high school. It was a science team that competed, sophomores, that competed in a statewide contest for coming up with solutions to certain problems. Five teams were selected from the state of Illinois, and there weren't class separations. They were all, this sophomore group that came before us was selected to go to the national competition in Florida. And they were, you know, trying to raise money to make this trip. I was just amazed that, you know, these, this is their only second year of doing this. And that this young group of sophomores beat out the upperclassmen and are going to this marvelous competition. And there are only five teams from the state of Illinois selected. So like I said, no class separations. They were up against Naperville, all the big schools. And they went to the top five. I'm so proud of them, and I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of it. Because they go June 22 or something like that, so it's a hurry up. And Rotary did give them money for this trip, so. Secondly, what was I going to read? Oh, if you're watching this.
Don't.
Don't. Get out of your house and go down to the Cruisin' Nights Street Fair. Come on, people. It's a grand time, and it's a beautiful night. Don't be watching TV. Go out on the street. See your neighbors, see your friends, see everyone.
Buy raffle tickets.
Buy, right. Buy split-pot raffle tickets so we can give them more money. So, and thirdly, the garage sales will be coming up, the community-wide, in August. There will be information up on the website soon, so just keep your eyes open. But it will be taking place in August for the community garage sale. And I think that's all I got tonight.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. The first one, Westmont First will meet again on June 19. That's a Monday at 6:00 PM at the library. And we're still promoting the Blue Ribbon Project in support of our fine police officers here in town. And those ribbons are available. That information is on the website. And we thank you for all the support for that. And then prior to this meeting, we had a community development committee meeting. And at that meeting, we covered a wide range of topics related to community development. In the building division, we talked about code enforcement and permits. And, you know, it was pointed out this evening that there's been over $5.5 million in permitted activity so far this year, which is a pretty good pace, so we're expecting good things. And then also in the engineering developer, or division, they are working with the GIS program to incorporate that into all the things that the village has to do in the community. And then finally, in the planning division, we spent some time talking about a sign code as we're reviewing this current sign code and updating all of that. And there has been several public meetings to get input for that. So that's been talked about a lot. And then excitingly, sometime this year, we're hoping that we can get some wayfinding signs out into the community to actually mark Westmont, where the boundaries are as you enter the town. And I just want to say the designs are beautiful, and we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items. Our next administration committee meeting will be August 3 at 4:30 in this room. Everyone's invited to come out and attend. The next thing I wanted to let you know is that we are always in need of volunteers. We, at the Westmont Special Events, put on the Cruisin' Nights every Thursday night in the month of June, July, and August. And we would love to have people come out and give us an hour, give us two hours, whatever you can afford to give us. It'd be absolutely amazing. The Taste of Westmont, we also need volunteers. If you can give us a commitment of just two hours for the whole weekend, that would be amazing. If you go onto our website and sign up, that would be awesome. Otherwise, you can call the Westmont Special Events Office and give them your name and information. The phone number at the office is 630-829-9378. So everybody can come out and really join us, because it would be a great thing. And thank you, Jenny, for mentioning, come on out. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is July 6 at 4:30, right here in Village Hall. And I'd like to invite up Deputy Chief Riley to talk about the kids' safety camp, please.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. I just want to remind everybody that the fire department, along with the police department, is holding the kids' safety camp. We still have numerous openings for the June 20 and 21 class, along with the August 1 and August 2 class. It's for third through fifth grade students between the ages of eight and 10 years old. If you're interested, please contact the fire department. Ask for Chris Hardy at 630-981-6400. It's a great camp, and it's a good two days to get rid of your kids to bring them to the firehouse. We encourage everybody to try to have your children attend these classes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And the next, I'd like to invite up Police Chief Gunther to talk about upcoming squad car night. And their new jumpy house.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. Squad car night is a week from today. So we will have lots of squad cars in attendance, along with some other private-owned vehicles. So we will have the bounce house, we will have plenty of police officers on the street, and we will have the parade in the evening. So come on out. Hopefully it'll be a great night. And for the record, I will not be in town. Deputy Chief Grun will be in charge, so look for him and give him a hard time in my absence. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last, I just want to thank John Yater for help coordinating our sixth year of doing the DuPage River Sweep here in Westmont. I was, I was out there with him. We had about 20 volunteers that came. We, each year we clean up hundreds of pounds of garbage in St. Joseph's Creek. This year we focus kind of from Twin Legs Golf Course all the way down to 63rd Street. It's always an impactful event, and thanks to him for putting it together. It is a lot of work, going to get all the supplies out in Naperville and coordinate all the volunteers. So appreciate him putting the effort in for that, and that's all I have, sir. Thank you. Trustee Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be July 20, and it is before our village meeting here. Right now, they have the rain barrel program going on, and all the information is at the village website. And then also downstairs, they have handouts and an example. And I have nothing from the Environmental Improvement Commission, but I can assure you, they have a lot in the file. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Guzal.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. We had a finance committee meeting earlier, and we discussed places for eating tax. We also talked about, there's some three hotel multiple grant requests tonight from the Park District for the Summer Musical, Concerts in the Park, The Haunted Forest. Then we also discussed the overview of our appropriations ordinance and timeline. Our public hearing for the appropriations ordinance will be 7:06. Anticipated adoption is scheduled for 7:06. It must be approved and filed with the county by the end of July. There will be a draft ordinance available to the public currently at the Village Hall on 6:21, thereafter 6:21. And then moving on for bonds, we are currently in the process of doing bonds for stormwater infrastructure improvements. Those bonds are going to be financed by the sales tax that was passed a few years ago for stormwater management. There will be a public hearing on the bonds scheduled for July 20. So I just wanted to bring that date to everyone's attention. And then last but not least, I was very fortunate last month to attend Where Have the Monarchs Gone? It was a talk at the library, and it was presented by Pat Miller, who's a conservation specialist. And I just wanted to tell everybody, it was a great talk. When you think about Where Have the Butterflies Gone? Growing up, you always saw the monarchs and everything. And a lot of the issues are that the monarchs have no feeding. All the milkweed plants have kind of gone by the wayside. So we got some really great handouts. And invite a monarch to lunch, so you plant some milkweed. And I can tell you, we have milkweed in the back ready to be planted. So if anybody's interested, monarch waste stations are plants that bring the monarchs in so they can feed. And if anybody's interested on the information, they can go to monarchwatch.org. But I want to thank, I believe it was the Environmental Improvement Commission in the library for putting the talk on. It was great. So yes, I'm hoping to get some monarchs in to come and have lunch at my house. Thank you, Mayor.
Trustee Addington.
Couple of things. We'll go through them as, I'll go through my two quickly. The other one will take a little longer. Schools out, so again, as I mentioned last time, I think all the schools are now finished for summer. Please watch our children, because they're in the streets and in the parks and riding their bikes and everything else. So we want to be careful of them. And of course, we had, we had a mostly successful barbecue Friday. Because of the rain, of course, was kind of a lost day, unfortunately. But then Saturday and Sunday turned out to be absolutely super. We had a great, again, another great contest, almost 60 pro teams, and I think we had 42 amateur teams. So we still had a very good contest, but we also had two great days of weather. And those that attended, we had several thousand people who, of course, came. This is the time to let us know if you have any suggestions. It's fresh in your minds, those that attended. So please let any of the Lions Club members know if there's any suggestions for the future for us to keep making it better. It continues to grow. And, but we need to hear from the general public on what they'd like to see and do. So, and that's all I have, except that I would like to invite Jill Ziegler and Larry Forsberg up to the podium. Because we have had several economic development meetings over the spring and winter. And have had multiple presenters at several of the meetings, sometimes as many as three. And, but, all this stuff is now in the works. So we thought it might be nice for us to kind of give everybody a heads up on what's happening. So I'm going to turn the floor over to them.
What you've got in front of you is a list of projects. There are new businesses that have opened, projects that are underway, residential overview. You can see on the projects underway, there's a couple of multimillion-dollar projects. A couple were mentioned earlier in the community development meeting with the GOC, M.D., of course. So we want to make sure that we're giving the board current information of what's going on. And you'll see this coming to each and every member of the board.
As we briefly mentioned in community development committee, we had 158 permits in May and 447 for the year. That includes residential and commercial. We, and we had $4 million worth of construction value in May alone. And so far this year, as Trustee Barker mentioned, we've had about $5.5 million just in 2017 in comparison to $8 million over 2016. And as Larry mentioned, we also have several large building permits coming up shortly. So we are expecting the same to continue with the newer projects coming in this fall.
Any particular questions on any projects or anything related to?
No, well done. This is very useful. We talked about communicating, and this is exactly what we're looking for.
And this really does include a presentation that some of you have seen, I think is going through the works right now, with the purchase of the property up on Pasconelli Drive by Ryan. And they haven't disclosed yet who they've got tapped to come in. But that's a, it's a huge project that is supposed to, what, 150 jobs?
Yes, this is Oakmont Point over, which is the former Serva Building at 700 Oakmont off Pasconelli. So we're expecting a huge expansion over there with increased parking. They're going to re-landscape the entire site. It'll be a Class A facility for a headquarters. So we're excited to hear who the tenant will be.
So again, a lot going on. Now the culmination of the meetings and planning and zoning and everything else is coming to fruition with the people working and getting, and getting things started. So we thought this was a good time to bring all of this to you, so you can see that they're busy.
There are additional discussions going on, and we look forward to adding items to this list on a regular basis.
Yeah. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's it, sir.
All right, moving on. Consent agenda. Does any board member have any item they'd like to be removed? Steve? Steve, would we want to remove the, the Angel Haven?
There's an Angel Haven Foundation request on the consent agenda and the applicant is here, I can describe it during the consent agenda or?
Why don't we just describe it and then we'll allow her opportunity to come up and talk about it.
Sure.
Let's do it that way. So, we'll leave it on the agenda. If not, then I'll ask, on the consent agenda, I'll ask Manager May to read the consent agenda.
Thank you. First item on the consent agenda, our Village Board meeting minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held May twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen. Next is Finance Ordinance Number Three in the amount of one million thirty-three thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. It's followed by the April Financial Report. Board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of April twenty seventeen. We have purchase orders next. First purchase order, Atlas Bobcat, fifty-three thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars. That's the name of the company, but it is for the compact excavator that was budgeted for this year. Second purchase order, Twin Supplies, twenty thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars forty-six cents as reference to the LED streetlight project and those costs are offset by grant revenue. Next, L and R Construction Company, nine hundred and thirty thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. This is the open purchase order for the Naperville and Warwick Stormwater Project that you previously approved the contract for. Similarly, the next purchase order is for RW Dunhaman Company, seven hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and three cents, also a purchase order for a construction contract, this one for East Richmond Water Main and Resurfacing Project that was previously awarded. The total of the purchase orders is one million eight hundred thousand five hundred eighty dollars and forty-nine cents. Brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number Three to two million eight hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Next is a hotel motel grant request. The next three are hotel motel grant requests for the Park District. First one is for Concerts in the Park. Board to consider a motion awarding hotel motel grant request in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to Westmont Park District for Concerts in the Park events. Second event is Haunted Forest. Board to consider a motion awarding the hotel motel grant request in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to the Westmont Park District for the Haunted Forest event. Next is Summer Musicals. Board to consider a motion awarding hotel motel grant request in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to the Westmont Park District for the performance of summer musicals. And we talked about at the Finance Committee meeting, the balance of that, these are all budgeted and expended, expected requests and that leaves the balance of that fund at five thousand dollars if approved. Last on, the consent agenda is one community event. It's the Angel Haven Foundation Benefit Sale. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Angel Haven Foundation, a non, not-for-profit corporation for their annual fundraising yard sale. There are five items. First is the approval of a four-day yard sale at two thirteen East Fifty-Fifth Street from June twenty-second to June twenty-fifth, from nine AM till six PM. The, the next four are waivers of fees. First, the tent permit fee, then the Village's Loan a Truck Program fee, garage sale permit fee, and lastly, the waiver of cost for the temporary signed banner permit. All that together concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion by Eddington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made in second. Would you like to come to the podium on the question and remind us what you do with your benefit?
Not too sure what I do. My name is Barbara Roos and I am a Director of the Angel Haven Foundation. This is our seventeenth year of having our benefit sale and the sale runs from June twenty-second through June twenty-fifth at the West Hills Community Church Lot. Thursday through Saturday, our hours are nine to six. Sunday, they're from twelve till we get tired. Our sale is based on people donating items to us throughout the year and it's everything you have in your own home. The items that we do not send down to our two hundred families in the Appalachia Mountains of Virginia is what you see at our sale. Because there is, without exaggerating, fifty thousand items or more, we don't take the time to tag anything, we just ask that people come and take what they'd like and leave a reasonable donation to us. And then we use that money from the sale to purchase food for these families because we get everything donated throughout the year except food. So, it all kind of comes full circle, no matter whether it goes down there or it's in our, our sale. We have everything from medical equipment to furniture to clothing to toys. Everything is under tents for inclement weather. If you need to fertilize your lawn, just wait for our sale because I guarantee it's going to rain. If you would like to donate anything, at this point, I would like to request that you bring it to the sale site. I currently have three ten-by-twenty storage units, a two-car garage, a house that's busting at the seams, so I can't at this point go and pick anything else up. But you are more than welcome to drop it off, you will be given a tax receipt, we are tax deductible. We are also looking for volunteers that week of the sale to come and help put things out. It's just basically taking things out of boxes, putting it out on the tables, organizing it, getting it ready for our Thursday morning open. Any questions?
I think everything's the same it's been.
Same as it was last year.
And the year before that.
Yeah, and the year before that, and the year before that. This is our seventeenth year with the foundation.
Hopefully the weather's good.
Used to do it out of our home.
I did.
Do you have a phone number where people can reach you to volunteer?
Yes. My phone number is six three zero nine seven one one eight four two. Just leave me a message. If I don't get back to you right away, please be patient, I will. My phone is ringing off the hook. And at this point, I'm actually turning down donations, they have to wait and bring it to the sale because I, there's just no place else to put it, which is good, which is very good.
Well, good luck, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just a question on the hotel motel grant, you said that there's five thousand dollars, excuse me, five thousand dollars left?
If these are all approved, there'll be five thousand dollars left in the fund.
And that is just for the, the annual year fund? There, there's more of a, of a reserve there also?
Oh, yes, the, just that was set aside in that budget account for, specifically for grant requests for?
For this budgeted year?
Yes.
Okay, very well, thank you for that.
And whatever's not used will go back into the reserve.
Because I thought somewhere along the line, we lost some money somewhere, but now that makes more sense.
Any additional comments? Now roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Moving on to new business, A Fifty-Ninth and Williams, a tax deed purchase. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following actions related to the acquisition of property located at Fifty-Ninth Street and Williams Street. One, approving the mayor's appointment of Lynette Lockwitz of Reader Law Office's LTD, a special counsel for the village for the limited purpose of obtaining a tax deed to the said property. And two, approving a certificate of sale agreement to enable the village to purchase said property via tax deed. And I'd ask Attorney Zemanek or Manager May or Director Ziegler or all if they can comment on this one.
This is vacant property at Fifty-Ninth and Williams. It was discussed previously with the board about the fact that this property was available for purchase by the village. The back taxes for the past three years were unpaid and were unpaid by the underlying property owner. A company came in, paid those back taxes, petitioned the court for a deed because the back taxes were not claimed or paid off by the original owner. The county reached out to the village and said, hey, you might be interested in this property, it's in a floodplain, it's unbuildable. The person, the company that bought the back taxes realized the property had no value to them, so was willing to transfer their rights to the village to obtain the tax deed. So, from a cost perspective, the village would be paying the exact amount of back taxes that this company paid, twenty thousand eight hundred eleven dollars, three cents to obtain ownership to this property, which will serve as valuable stormwater management for the village. Will remain vacant. In addition, this attorney is the attorney who is representing the company that paid the back taxes, initiated the court proceedings, offered to come on board to help the village finalize this process because she's a specialist in tax deed purchases. The fee for her is five hundred dollars and then there's about sixty dollars in recording the deed, et cetera.
One motion?
Uh, one motion, yes.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question, Trustee Eddington.
This was going to be a church at one time.
Was it really?
They, this goes back to when Frank Valerie was still mayor, the property came up and matter of fact, I got admonished by Pete Zamas because I started to ask economic questions about the benefits of the village and Peter said, oh, you can ask those kind of questions, it's a church.
Floating church.
But then they ran into the, what you just heard, they ran into the stormwater problems.
Floodplain, yeah.
Floodplain, yeah.
Hundred percent.
And then they, they walked.
Not buildable, yeah.
So, this has sat there vacant for a long, long time and, and for the price.
Yeah, great acquisition for the village.
Glad to see that everyone, from when we talked about it, followed through because this is, this is probably one of the greatest things that's really happened. I mean, it's, it's an eyesore, it's a floodplain and it's tied into our parks, I mean, it's, it's a really good deal for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Anybody seen, now roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, seven oh one Blackhawk Drive, the U Store It. Board to consider an ordinance approving a commercial masonry waiver request from U Store It Self-Storage in the M Manufacturing District. I've got Director Ziegler to provide some more information.
Thank you, Mayor. U Store It is here tonight to request a waiver to construct a non-masonry facade to their exterior wall. They're going to replace thirty feet of brick with glass on the south elevation and ninety feet of brick with glass on the west elevation. As discussed at CDC this afternoon, staff will work on a tax amendment to recommend this waiver be handled administratively in conjunction with the Fire Department in the future. We recommend approval and the Fire Department has included a memo in your packet that stated that the fire rating is maintained and that they're comfortable with the request as well. I'm available for any questions.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just say that, you know, the, the brick facade was something that was, you know, the, call it boulder style construction and glass and steel is more contemporary and modern, you see it going up all over. So, while it might be unique to that spot right now, in the future, it won't be.
Any other comments from the audience? Anybody who owns the business want to say anything? I opened the door for you.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. I'm Peter Nora, I'm Vice President of U Store It. We're a family-run business, this is, this will be our tenth property. It's me and my father, he started back in nineteen eighty-seven. We're really excited to be in Westmont and just recently opened a property off of Route eighty-three in Elmhurst. If you're ever driving by, it's, it's a nice property and we expect that this one will be a very, very much quality project, so.
Are all ten of your locations in Illinois?
Uh, we have some in San Diego.
San Diego, awesome. The facility on eighty-three is beautiful. I've watched that construction go on, it's really a nice place.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, Jill's, Jill's been very helpful and Larry and Larry Kaufman and we've had a couple of meetings sort of going through the village when we were acquiring it from the Julian Brothers and they've been a great help and glad to be here.
Did you purchase the building from them?
Uh, yes.
Any comments, questions? I'll have a roll, no, did I have a motion?
Yes.
I'll have a roll call.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
The waiver request was approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
New business C, declare items as surplus equipment. Board to consider an ordinance to declare fire department hose and radio equipment as surplus property. And I've got Deputy Chief Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. The property as identified in the attachment has outlived its useful life and is outdated, non-functioning, or otherwise economically not maintainable. The equipment will be sold, donated, or scrapped as appropriate. This property upon being declared surplus and disposable will be removed from the village property inventory. And just for the hose, I spoke with Director Ramsey and I'm sure he could use a few lengths of hose. We have about eighty-one lengths of hose, that's twenty years plus. Plus, we have numerous radios back from the Police Department that we got handed to us that we'd like to declare a surplus. Those are no longer programmable or narrowbanding, so those radios to us are no good, but we will be giving some of those to EMA to use for street fair or some of their functions that they?
That was going to be one of my questions for you guys and even, even for us at the barbecue, would they be available?
Yes, sir.
And, and of any use to us? Because I know we rent communications right now, maybe those would be available.
Yeah, I mean, they are probably about twenty years old or so, but they are HT seven fifty radios, they are VHF-style radios that we certainly could program to, to your liking also. Right now, Fire Department with the narrowbanding in the county and the Starcom radio, Fire Department really doesn't have any use along with Police Department.
Submit a bid, Jim.
There you go.
There you go. Motion to approve, Nero?
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, the prevailing wage, DuPage County. Board to consider an ordinance to ascertain the prevailing wages as defined in said act. This is an annual event and I'd ask Manager May to provide some additional information.
Essentially, this is law requiring our approval of this. The law itself requires that we, what's called ascertain the prevailing wages as defined in the law as published by DuPage County for us, for laborers, mechanics, and other workers in the locality of the village who are employed or contracted in performing construction of public works. Not only do we have to follow the prevailing wage, you, you have to pass an ordinance stating that you intend to follow the prevailing wage act. And we do do this every year.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second.
On the question?
The only question I would have, and this has come up with another public body, what if you don't pass it? State would hold your funds or?
You know, I, I looked at this once upon a time because another community asked me that exact same question. It says that the village shall pass, adopt a prevailing wage ordinance, so it's mandatory to do it, but there's no penalty provision that I recall, so it's, it's interesting. And if you look at the last available prevailing wages that the state published, it goes technically through DuPage County, it's stated July of twenty fifteen, so state hasn't updated the information since then because they have important things to do.
You know, the prevailing wage is, is an interesting thing because it, it goes back really to the first Mayor Daley. And it's somewhat unfair when it comes to municipalities because the whole idea of prevailing wages, you were usually seasonal and you usually weren't guaranteed forty hours a week. Well, municipalities do get that forty hours a week, so really, the original Mayor Daley threw prevailing wage off for the whole state, you know, where again, if you only worked six months out of the, out of the year, you were supposed to get more money to, to equal that out, whereas prevailing wage for, let's say, a mechanic here, he's going to get his forty hours. So, it's one of those things that the history of prevailing wage in Illinois is, is a little skewed in my opinion, but it's, it's here to stay now.
Well, do, any other comments or questions? Well, do, any other comments or questions? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, public comment procedures. Board to consider ordinance approving procedures for public comment at all public meetings of village boards, commissions, and committees. We've been working on this for a while now and Attorney Zemanek has prepared it and I ask him to comment on it.
It was emailed to you yesterday in the packet of ordinances. Hopefully, you all had a chance to see it. It's a one-page, two-page exhibit to the ordinance. These are real basic public comment rules. We kind of scoured what other municipalities had adopted from time to time and cobbled together the best provisions and put them into a policy. Currently, on the front of your agendas every meeting, there's a kind of a statement as to some of what the policy is, such as a three-minute time limit, but that was never formally adopted by ordinance. So, we decided to put it into an ordinance form. We can have the procedures, which is the exhibit to the ordinance on the desk out front so the public is aware of it. And we can replace this language on the agenda if this is approved, moving forward, just to say participants shall follow the procedures for public participation as adopted by the village of Westmont.
Do I have a motion? No.
Move, Guzzo.
Second. Nero? Motion made in second. Trustee Addington, on the question?
Believe it or not, I didn't get them yesterday, which is, so the only, well, they ignore me anyways. But anyhow, this doesn't change, like we just had with the guy from U Store It, that they talk. I know there are some communities who have restricted, either you talk in front of the meeting and they're not allowed to talk when their item is on the agenda.
This is not restricting, we're not restricting that. The current policies and procedures are going to basically remain in effect. It just codifies, it's three minutes when you're up there speaking. Mayor has the right to call up people for agenda items when they occur. If you're speaking for a group, you can have up to six minutes refrain from obscene language, et cetera, et cetera, and you can be removed from a meeting, things like that.
We just reduced it finally into a document that people can follow.
Yeah.
Whether they do or not is a different story.
We've been governed supposedly by the three-minute rule forever and it's never been, well, I haven't enforced it since I've been...
Frank put that into effect with Joe D'Amico.
It doesn't go for trustees though, right?
No, trustees...
Maybe it should.
That's a two-minute roll.
You can restrict me.
Let's hurry up and vote on that. Is anything included?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, Trustee Barker?
I still have a little issue with those lady that came and talked about...
The candle in the refrigerator?
Yes, yeah, that went on a little bit longer than three minutes. Thank you.
Yeah. I, that's probably the one I should have, I tried to speed her along, but I probably should have.
So, my question would be is, it always bothers me that, you know, the people that testify under planning and zoning are under oath, but when they come here and they talk to the board under open forum, they're not under oath, but people take what they say as truth or fact or that they are under oath. Is there any statement that we can make to say this is the opinion of a particular person? Because I see there's value in that, that, you know, if you hear it at the board meeting and you heard it on tape, it must be a fact and they can, they're really free to come up there and say whatever they want.
We certainly can add that, that any statements made are opinions of the individual speaker. No, I, personally, I think having sat through these enough, I think it's pretty self-evident when someone comes up and says, I'd like to talk to you about X, Y, or Z, and explains their position. One, you guys don't have to respond to their comments or questions here, and that's what this says. And two, that they're expressing a concern or an opinion and that's all it is. If there's validity to it, then maybe you guys would consider it as subsequent action, but, you know. Or the Americans say, thank you for your opinion.
Right, well, yeah.
I do know that the chairman of our planning and zoning board has expressed that same frustration in the fact that they'll say one thing in front of them because they've been under oath and they'll come here and say something completely different. And probably the best example was when we were looking at that animal hospital thing. I mean, they said there is all kinds of things against the potential new developer or new owner that wanted to come in. They haven't, it wasn't even true. That they never said at planning and zoning because they were under oath and they're not here.
And that's one of the times when you have conflicting testimony like that or someone trying to introduce new evidence where you can call out a member of the public and say, you know, that those comments weren't made at the public hearing process and, you know, you're not under oath now and we're not going to consider these comments.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
That's just a...
It always runs across your mind that they could say what they want.
And we understand that, but not everybody understands it.
And you're right, saying somebody, saying something different or just because they heard it, it must be true.
That's right. Happened at the board meeting.
It's like the internet. It's got to be true.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, I saw it there, so it must be true. Well, that isn't the case.
Any additional comments? Questions? Ready for the roll call, please?
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Miscellaneous. Anybody got anything to add other than, you'll see them on the street in about five minutes?
I only want to add that the garage sales, community garage sale is for fifth and sixth. They've added Sunday to it and also, we will not have a public information committee meeting on June 22nd. And the one thing I do want to caution everyone, talking about the butterflies, and there was a company that was soliciting here in town that would kill insects and spiders and everything. And at that point, I had just planted a butterfly bush. And I said, well, what about butterflies? Well, yeah, it'll kill them too. And I said, and I wouldn't watch your stuff because I'm trying to save the monarchs.
Yeah, exactly. And, yeah, so plant that milkweed.
And be careful with anybody coming around wanting to...
And just to piggyback on Jenny's comments, you know, Lisa Madigan's office recommends, their number two thing they recommend is to never hire somebody when they come to your door unsolicited. So, if, you know, to watch all these people that are coming door-to-door, I heard a friend who signed up with that exterminating business and I was taken back that you signed up with somebody who came to your door like that.
I was worried because the person just snorted me dead. He told, salesman told me and I'm thinking, that'll kill my butterflies too.